Nice to see everyone here. I'm Harold Lee Stan for our prayer and our prayer.
Mr. President, we probably ought to be thanking for this day, Lord. Thank you for this wonderful county of ours, Lord, and for your oversight. And we just ask for your wisdom and discernment while we lift up Brother Henry Jordan today, Lord, he won't be with us today, Lord, but he'll be in our thoughts and he'll even be in our decisions. So will we just ask you a blessing, Lord, and what we just ask that what we say and do today, Lord, be in tune with the guidance for this county. Will we thank you for this country and will we thank you for the privileges and the rights that you have bestowed upon us, Lord, because each one came through your hands. So will we just lift up again, Lord, and just lift up this nation, Lord, I'm just terribly concerned about it, not about the condition of it, but the future and what the future of it will abide in how we put you first. So we thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the board of commissioners for the Gates County Board of Commissioners, Congresswoman Simmons, Congresswoman Simmons, 2019, to like certainly welcome all of you here. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2019 meeting. We have a copy in our notebook. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we approve of the amendments provided. I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion here or none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. It's approved, aye to zero. The next item on the agenda is the agenda to approve that, what is the pleasure of the board? Are there any additions or subtracts from the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have no amendments to the agenda. Motion, anybody?
Is possible to move the upper office for the court to not stay along?
I think she wants us to do that, so.
Okay, we can do the tax, open office for tax collector. We can do that before the.
Before early?
Before.
Four.
Before the nights delegations.
How about a speech that he can give, third amendment?
Okay, motion to approve the agenda as adjusted.
So who says?
Okay, any discussion here or none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, it passes aye to zero. Okay, at this time, we will have the upper office for new tax assessor and collector, Christopher Hill, and our court of courts here to administer the vote. Actus to remedy.
Actus to remedy.
Isolment square.
Isolment square.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will take the discharge.
And that I will take the discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As tax administrator.
As tax administrator.
Tax collector.
Tax collector.
And tax assessor.
And tax assessor.
And that I will not allow.
And that I will not allow.
My actions.
My actions.
As tax administrator.
As tax administrator.
Tax collector.
Tax collector.
And tax assessor.
And tax assessor.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
Not personal or political franchise.
Not personal or political franchise.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard, and we hope you're here for many years.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity and the welcome.
And let us know if there's anything we can do to help you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, this is where it's coming. Okay, at this time, we have a nice delegation to honor Governor's service awards.
Yes, ma'am. Chairman Commissioners, just wanted to make you all aware that Governor's volunteer service awards nominations are open at this time and the extension office is serving as the chairman of this committee to oppose. If you don't mind, I'll read you the written description that I sent yesterday to the paper for the release. The awards program created by the Office of the Governor in 1979 recognizes North Carolina's most dedicated volunteers. Through the years, the award has been bestowed on thousands of North Carolinians who have shown concern and compassion for their neighbors by volunteering in their local community. Each county selects up to 10 individuals, businesses, groups, teams, and one paid director of volunteers to be recognized for their outstanding contributions to their communities. One of the nominees will be nominated to the Governor's Metallion, which works with volunteer service, which is awarded to the top 20 volunteers in the state. A local committee evaluates the nominations. And this information has been posted on our website, it's been posted on our Facebook page, as I said, it's been sent to the newspaper. Applications can be taken online and there is a paper application which we have available in the lobby by the front office. If anybody has any questions.
And when you feel like the application is given to you.
Given back to me, yes, ma'am. The online application will go to the governor's person and then they will be sent back now to us.
And what is the deadline for that?
January 17th, 2020.
January 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We want to thank your division too for looking after us so very often.
This, the uninited delegation, sign up, please. Okay, Mrs. Snell?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a couple of things that I would like to address. 850 US Island, 158 West Gates.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of things I briefly want to address and then I believe in. The first thing happens to be, it refers to your former, well, the majority of your CAC, Joint CAC. The region R ombudsman gave, presented a package to this body. I have no idea what was in the package. My wife missed mandatory meeting in July before she was ill and she was the chairperson of that committee. However, there's a charge that was made, conflict of interest. That's a very serious charge to be made against anyone, especially when the bodies are delivering a service which looks after the bill of rights of senior citizens of this county. My wife took on the responsibility of coming to that organization, the CAC, because of her late mother. As opposed to putting her mother in a nursing home, my wife decided that she would retire and she would come to return to Gates County to take care of her mother. Then she saw the conditions that what was according to, and she decided that she would try to do her best to take care of senior citizens, to give them a better quality of life and give them more things while they are serving. Conflict of interest itself is stating that you are receiving something monetarily, directly or indirectly, from your duties as a public servant. Now, that is not the case. A 501(c)(4) was set up and the 501(c)(4) is controlled by you, the commissioners. Representative Budfield's district director stated because there was an deficiency of funds to pay the operations that my wife and the other CAC members conduct for the seniors to form a 501(c)(3), which our spouse and the CAC did form. Then all of a sudden, the region ombudsman for region R started seeing this conflict of interest. Conflict of interest, how? A full package was sent to you, Chairman Hoffler, probably 50 some pages dated September the 18th. You should have received it approximately September the 21st. The governor received a copy of it, the head of DHHS, the ombudsman for the state, and Commissioner Smith, who happens to be over him. Supposedly everybody of all states. I'm not speaking of you, Chairman Hoffler. But the governor has not responded, so our local representative, Al Deli, sued robbery. Mr. Hunter was contacted to get the package to the governor's office again. That was done last weekend. There's been no response from the governor's office. But to sum it up, conflict of interest is a serious charge against citizens of this county who were doing their diligence to serve other citizens of this county. That's something I don't think this board should take lightly. It is an insult for someone to accuse citizens who are going into their pockets, taking out money to serve citizens of this county, for someone to come up with an allegation that they are stealing or they are benefiting materially from what you're doing. My wife received no benefit whatsoever from serving this county and the citizens of this county. By God's grace, she has enough means to take care of herself without taking anything under the cover. That's point one, and I'm finished with it. I'll take any questions if you should have any questions. Moving on, the second item that I have on the agenda happens to be something that the county is doing to us. I've put before you a package. You don't have to take any action or pay on that, I don't expect you to because you have it saved. But it's some pages that I threw together. We had, I am mandated by the trust instrument that my wife's mother took together to be sure that all.
But this is, I will ask, this is the information you want to share with us?
That's the information, and I want more than that. I want the county to do something about it because the county has taken $163 of our money and we did not utilize 52,000 gallons of water in a 28-day period. Thank you.
And you can do sign up again if you can, Mrs. Snell.
No, I can't say, I have some, I have some business that I have to take care of. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll read this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the administrative reports. First one up is County Manager.
This is for September 24th to October 25th. Work has begun on the bathrooms of the historic courthouse. Details and points are being gathered for the data handicap bathroom and heat for the bathroom. The handicap bathroom is being created in a location that previously did not have heat in there. No one thought of this until this week, which is the week of October 25th, because the area was always comfortable. However, due to the room now being closed off, heat and air must be provided. There is need to pay for all aforementioned items that work by Andrea's corporate payment under vote. The county is still awaiting paperwork from various businesses within West Commerce in order to submit for monetary reimbursement from the rural center on the water project. Completion paperwork will be completed on this one engineering on behalf of the county for EK. On October the 8th, this assignment I met with Pierce Group and legal municipalities representatives to review insurance data. There will be an increase in the cost of health insurance for fiscal year 21. Employees have been reminded to complete required physicals before they will be responsible for paying 10% of their insurance beginning July 1st of 2020. On October the 9th, Alabama RPO met and approved the methodology for ranking transportation projects within our region. The project list was also approved. Gates County has three projects on the ranking list. Widen U.S. 13 from Tarquay onto Gates School Road had an estimated cost of $41,966,000. Widen 13 from Gates School Road to the Virginia Line had an estimated cost of $47,799,000. And widening 158 from Highway 13 to NC 32 in Sunbury had an estimated cost of $147,399,000. As reported earlier, preliminary engineering committee projects have been suspended. The UT state of projects are being suspended or delayed due to budget issues related to weather events and the M.A.T.S. project. The Alabama Regional Library is beginning a strategic planning process. Excuse me, my mouse keeps on them. The first meeting was held on October the 9th. Surveys will be available to 500 random citizens in each county. Surveys will also be available online and in the libraries. Everyone, even those who do not use the library, are encouraged to participate in surveys which will operate program. Funding for the state library system is the highest in the bid feeders and Jennifer Patterson Director is actively writing grants to take advantage of funding. On October the 24th, the Tri County Animal Shelter Advisory Board met. Adoptions included in the last quarter and a new vein was purchased for animal transport. Aware shared a new playground funded by JFK Office of Compliance. Pre-stanneuter procedures to low-income pay owners are available through Aware. A feasibility study was conducted by JFK Architecture on the animal shelter. JFK recommended that either they building an entirely new animal shelter or renovating and adding on to the current shelter. Both options are about $2 million. Identify the board, Gates County would not be in a position over the next few years to undertake additional capital projects due to the financial constraints. Performances in Choua stated they have a few large capital projects on the horizon for the next few years. Managers agreed to meet at a later date to discuss. Do you have any questions?
Since you wrote this, has the information, paperwork been submitted to the administration of the board?
No, there's been no response. And some of that will be discussed under closed session.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I add some questions about the audio, the bottom October 9? Give us a description or recommend this?
It's a list of, I have known the animal projects throughout District 1 that affect all of those and airports, bike passengers, and various. And we need to text what I said for five minutes, please. You can't. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Always nice to have you here, compliments of the commissioners. It's nice to have you here today.
Commissioner Owens, let me repeat your question. You asked about the list and it's a long, long list and I have a copy in my office.
Yeah, I was, and I was also going to ask, the word widening, was that described as a, just two lanes?
That was what the paper said. I know, I'm not sure that widening, it's only going to be two lanes. Now, I'm not sure if they were talking about in this project, excuse me, if they're going to widen, widen the lanes and the shoulder. I know going across the swamp, the plan was rich and regenerated this last week in a meeting that was not RPO meeting. They're going to widen the lane itself 14 or 16 feet, I can't remember. And then they were going to widen the shoulder, so it's possibly five, six feet going across the swamp, but that is one of those engineering projects that's been suspended.
Okay, moving, is any other questions for County Manager? Okay, moving on to tax.
And don't forget, you have to do the resolution as separate.
Okay, before you do this, we do have to do the, the resolution is in our packet for appointing Christopher Hill as tax assessor and tax collector to serve as Gates County tax administrator. Commissioner Owens, would you read the resolution?
It's actually all the generals.
Gates County Board of Commissioners, resolution for appointing Christopher Hill as tax assessor and tax collector to be served as Gates County tax administrator. Whereas Christopher Hill was appointed by the Gates County Board of Commissioners to serve a term as tax administrator from November 6th, 2019, to expire June 30th, 2021. And whereas the Gates County tax administrator serves in the statutory roles of both the Gates County tax assessor and the Gates County tax collector. And whereas the Gates County tax administrator shall report to the Gates County Board of Commissioners and be subject to the board's direction and supervision to the extent that it is not inconsistent with North Carolina law applicable to the roles of the tax collector and county assessor and Mr. Hill's obligations therewith. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gates County Board of Commissioners, as provided for under Chapter 105-294 and Chapter 105-349 of the North Carolina General Statute, does hereby appoint Christopher Hill as Gates County tax assessor and Gates County tax collector for a term of two years commencing on November 6th, 2019, and expiring June 30th, 2021. And that such appointment shall be served under the title Gates County Tax Administrator. And the county of Gates adopted this sixth day in November, 2019. Gates County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move the second.
A motion that's been made, part of the second, I don't think it needs any discussions for evident what it is. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. If this one is five to zero, well, don't make a statement. So officially, you all in. Now you can give us our package for.
Good morning, and thank you again for your welcome to the county. Appreciate that. I think we have in front of you the tax letter for October 29th.
I didn't have a, I did not receive one.
At the end of October 2019, our annual levy was possibly 6.4 million hour. That's the fuel for motor vehicles. At this point, we've collected almost 18 and a half years of that budget. We do expect most of that will be collected in March of November 4th. If you want to start paying interest on that. We do have two refund requests this month. One is for a tax return, the statute requires we refund the unused portion of that. The second request is for two parties to pay the tax bill, so we are requesting a refund to the taxpayer, being that it was first paid by their SRO.
Well, we'll take those up. The first one is for a refund, as you said, on a vehicle that was sold and taxed turned in for minus $166.18, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move that to the approved section.
I mentioned in the note, the second, all the proper documentation is with it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. That passes five to zero. The second one is from taxpayer, I mean, it's a double pay for taxes, the minus $325, the SRO and the taxpayer both paid. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I mean, the motion be approved. I'll say the motion.
Again, all the practical documentation is with the item. Any old discussion, here or none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes five to zero as well. We, you will be sending us a full tax report to us.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to have to do that.
We got a lot of good, uh, torn in everything, so if you'd like to see that.
You do have it in your email.
We got it yesterday.
Okay, I knew I had it in there.
I sent it out last Friday.
Yes, I had that one, but generally have to wait for it.
Christopher, you have a copy of whatever you read.
Thank you, congratulations.
Okay, going on, any other questions for the tax? Okay, department reports, I can read. Is it any, any questions, mark to hear from any of the departments? As I can read in your reports. Okay, moving on to.
I would like to say something, and this is kind of a calendar, but it also goes back to my report. And again, in August, we had brought about having a border treaty. And then on October the 8th, that's when the message began requesting information when I reached out to the Ockham Association of County Commissioners. I did not receive any responses as still, as there's still interest in holding a border treaty. Because they have reached out to me to find out the status.
You reached out to?
The Ockham Association of County Commissioners.
And they still are ready to do so.
And what needs to select?
I know a lot of boards do that, to help fill your. I'll send that this time here.
If, if this time, I would sometime next year.
And I can forward it again, and like I said, I, in that email, I said, please submit. So for what to do it perhaps in February before we start the budget. That would perhaps be the two who facilitate, well, the one who facilitates in this area, he is a former county manager, he actually been in my mix before that. And I'm not sure who else, one of the rest, I believe he has retired again from, in CAC City, so I'm not sure who else will be coming to help, I don't know your name.
So you'll send it again?
I can forward it again.
Might be a more, I mean, that going to be summer, field, calendar lines.
And they were the 60-day minutes, 30-day minutes?
People are far 30. Oh, that's the latest, excuse me. The sooner we let it work better, but 30 days, no, it's too, too difficult.
Okay, we'll move on to, there's no old business, there's no public hearings, new business. First, update tribal policy.
This is just an update, essentially numbers, because it had not been updated since 2012. Meal rates are the new state and federal rates, which are already in effect, but they've not been updated. It also was clarified to. It also clarified to state that elected and appointed officials were to follow this policy in the past, that had always been implied, but it was never in writing. And it also encouraged in this policy, um, carpooling, which had always been implied, but never in writing.
I have just, um, page three to five, down near five on the highway. Meals will all be reimbursed on overnight stay required.
Yes.
But breakfast and lunch could be, could be...
If you were traveling, that's worded correctly. If you travel, if you leave and you're gone during the day before the event, and you return on the same day, you are not provided cost of meals. If you are provided the cost of meals, then that's a, that's a taxable item.
So where you have department for six AM breakfast?
That is when you were traveling overnight.
Okay, so all three of those points have to be achieved for that sentence. But I want it to be correct, so, so we're here.
Alright, so if you were leaving, for example, when I traveled to Chapelville for public law, for the law update, registration went by, it's given at nine o'clock, and it lasts until four. I leave my house typically by, by thirty, as late as to avoid traffic. I'm not eligible for breakfast, because I returned that same day.
Okay.
Typically, once again, depending on traffic, seven or so.
Okay, well, now, so, you know, my people, but, so using that scenario, you eat lunch.
Lunch is provided.
Okay, I mean, but it could be a meaning where...
You're not provided lunch.
Okay.
You are responsible for providing lunch.
So the key, the key is truly the whole lunch set?
Correct, and if you wish to change it, then that is a taxable item that will be included. Just like uniforms are taxed.
John, I know you do, uh, while traveling. Is that a, that seem right?
The, the one thing, the implied word you've got done, are we paying, are we giving, and I need another, I'm gonna need another, um, are we cutting a check, somebody's missing a night? Are we cutting them a check for the thirty, whatever the total?
The way it works is, and this has not changed, it's been the same practice, this was the practice before, I can't, as I said, the only thing that's been changed is what's in red, is that when someone travels, they have to turn their information in to get free approval. And they have to include how many meals they're gonna, how many breakfast, how many lunch, how many dinners. If a hotel includes complimentary breakfast, complimentary breakfast, you are not reimbursed breakfast. If lunch or dinner or any meal is provided as part of your registration, you are not provided that meal. You can request, the county paid for the hotel upfront, you have to provide, they did not from the hotel, the county credit card is used to reserve the room. You can also request an advance, but that advance has to be over fifty dollars. So if you're only gonna go, if you're only gonna have two meals, you cannot ask for an advance on, on meals. When you return, you have to bring back hotel receipts, and you do not try to get any receipts for meals, because it is a per diem, which is what the federal government uses.
This is a system, I mean, this is high school system, or, I don't know.
Hey, many of the government, uh, agents, we said, depending upon how far you travel to, you go. You travel low, you pass some of the lives, then you get rations, you know, but... And we have, other than yourself, do we have employees taking the county car on these trips away?
Any county department that has a county vehicle, passing county vehicle to their partner.
So if someone in the task force, they don't have a vehicle, and they will require you to, they drive your personal vehicle, get reimbursed?
Right.
But is that an option to drive the county car, or they just...
Well, their department doesn't have the vehicle, that's not an option.
Okay, and then, I like it now, a little bit below there, just, prior approval.
Correct, they have to, because it's pre-odd, as required by the, by the General Statute.
And we, we hold true to that, no exception.
There have been some exceptions, and we talk to that department, let them know that from now on, you're not gonna be allowed, you have to eat that travel. And they have seemed to get better about that.
Clearly, it's always understanding.
Yes.
Now, Chair, is there one or two things I wanted?
Okay, anyone else, comments, questions?
I'd like a clarification of the balance, uh, when you, when you drive your personal car, you have the permission.
If you're traveling on behalf of the county, you have the receipt permission, yes, sir, or no, you will be spending the county's funds.
Right, and you will be paid mileage?
And you will be reimbursed mileage, correct, you have to keep up with your mileage. And you are required to turn in a map quest that shows the mileage, and you're to use the shortest mileage between your paths and that location.
And if you have to pay mileage, even though you look like you're doing the same thing, you still have to be a person for your, uh, feelings.
You're not reimbursed for meals, but you are for mileage.
But you are about...
Yes, sir.
And it's federal rate, huh?
Yes, it's the federal rate.
Hope that was clear to the board.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve. Just, uh, update here for our Gates County tribal policy as presented, of course.
I'll say it, yes.
Mentioned the name, part of the second, and part of the discussion.
You want to, Kevin, uh, as far as discussion, uh, is, uh, is there extra expenses, maybe finances, and, 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 is there any other ways that, that anyone seems might be able to save us? Either cut more checks, or, or maybe it, uh, works out.
Um, as far as, you know, I'm from a, a state, I'm from a state job before here, and this is very similar to what we followed at the university. We followed the higher risk mileage reimbursement, the same per diem. And it was the same, um, if you traveled within the day, you did not get meals, but you could get reimbursed mileage if a state vehicle was not available and you had to drive your personal car. So, I mean, I, this is what I'm accustomed to with land.
Thank you, ma'am. And if I may, um, just a little discussion on this, do we have a, uh, a worksheet on, if you're planning a trip?
There's a tribal form, that's a tribal authorization.
Fill in there.
The school, I know the school system had a tribal form, Mrs. Jordan testified to that.
On, um, page three or five at the top, the line that we're marking out, what was the reason that I should have held, by that, the...
Because I included farther down under lodging, the link in the statements were, uh, above, excuse me. About the strongly recommended hotel rates are at or below the federal continent or United States rates, which can be found at, and it gives a website.
It's on the previous page.
Because that came up a little time, if I remember correctly, that was excessive hotel rates.
Right.
Um, so that was another thing that concerned me was, it says, it's strongly recommended, it doesn't say required, it said it's strongly recommended. Um, that leads up into interpretation, I would think, um, between the employee traveling and the county manager, must have come up.
Well, that was also the, that same disagreement, that was came up with the current one, which about must secure a government lodging rate, because sometimes that was not available at any of the locations. This website, it does give some links to the app, to hotel rooms, like the average. Um, I didn't look, I didn't look lately to see if it had changed, considering, for example, the mountains, peak time tourists, beach, at peak time tourists. If they take that into effect, or if it just stays the same, pretty much all year.
Because we really, we don't have, what's an example of outstate travel that someone would go to? Is there any examples?
If, for example, Billy were to go, I don't know if they have one, but they had a management, emergency management meeting, or if I was to go to the ICMA meet, national meeting, or if you were to travel to a NACM meeting, national meeting, those would be the only examples, typically, so not been here, other than one person going out of the state. I can't think of anyone else who's traveled.
If I may interrupt, Sheriff's Office sometimes will have someone picked up in New York, and we need to go get him and, and bring him back here for adjudication. So, that happens.
Okay, because I've never seen any meals being turned back in for any of that, since I started.
Is that what you're packing, packing out of the chipper?
Yeah.
Can't be out of the sausage.
That was the last thing that you...
Okay, alright. We'll call for the boot, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, if that's tied. Okay, the twenty, twenty census completion, I believe, um, Commissioner Jones has resigned from that, um, due to a conflict, events. So we need, um, appoint someone else to be, um, the person, go to person for the census in the county.
Madam Chair, by me?
Uh-huh.
Um, after meeting with Mr. Gioradia, um, I felt the need to step down from this position with a possible conflict down the road. Um, since then, I've let him know, um, he's emailed Natalie and myself. Um, right after our meeting, I actually, I reached out to someone, and I have someone I would like to nominate to take over the complete, um, county committee role. This person will do a great job, um, she and I have already talked. I showed her some documents to make sure she would be interested. I got a very good suitcase of documents yesterday from the census that I will happily give to her, um, if it is a pleasure of the board today. But if the floor is open, I'd like to, um, nominate Ms. Mary Ann Pittman to head this committee for the county.
I'll say that motion, ma'am, Chair.
Okay, Mary Ann Pittman? I thought I saw her.
Saying that, so, so, that's enough, you're off.
As she does at, in a, um, commission meeting on a regular basis, so... Um, and, um, is there, so you act, making that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
For her, is there, um, is such, okay, second has been in discussion. Is Miss Pittman willing to do it?
Yeah, um, somebody's got it, so...
Well, we do appreciate all people in our community stepping up. And, um, is any other questions or comments? Here are none, all those in favor of recommending Mary Ann Pittman to be the census coaching person in Gates County, um, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes five zero. So we'll be looking for you, forward to you getting all that information, I guess, so... Okay, the next item is, the census is for the one quarter cent tax sales and use tax. We got our tax information, this is Article forty-four, tax manager.
This tax will present you with other options about how to raise revenue for the county, and Article forty-six is currently not levied in the county. It is General Statute one oh five, and it starts, the short title is at five hundred and thirty-five. It's articles for one quarter cent county sales tax in the U.S. Tax Act. It is, allows the county to put out to referendum the ballot question, which must be phrased exactly as stated in the General Statute, for or against local sales and use tax at a rate of one quarter percent in addition to all other state and local sales and use taxes. If citizens would vote on it, and there is a process of, if they vote and it's passed, you have to send it to the Department of Revenue within seventy days before you can be due collection. And that has also fell down in the statute. It could be used for pretty much the day-to-day operations of the county. The second page that you have is actually from the Account Association of County Commissioners website that answers some questions. And as I stated, you have to state it, just like it says in the General Statute, you cannot stipulate what the money will be used for. And... Let's pop up on my computer, so... And that is where it also explains the process of how to go about implementing it if it is passed. The information that I have shows that there's, there could be the potential pass for ninety-three thousand dollars. If I'm understanding the email that I received recently, for how to calculate for that.
It's a little easy.
No, this is, no, that, that is not, they are, you know, it's easy to say.
So if the...
What's going on? Close the eyes, Association of County Commissioners.
So if the calculation's correct, it would represent how many three thousand?
About ninety-three thousand. And it, it has to go to, um, referendum that the, um, by a regular scheduled election, yes.
I'm not sure, I saw where, it's a general election.
Yes, for example, it's Washington County, I believe, they are trying to put it on the ballot whenever the primaries will be held.
I believe it indicates that it's not, you don't have to designate what it's for, it's not treated as restricted funds.
Correct.
Which is, you should keep it in that one there. Q and A was pretty helpful.
Yes, um, and it doesn't pass, you can't do it.
You have to go to the media, correct.
And it doesn't apply to, um, to the gas, correct.
As a matter of your information, unexpected any action, may I, I was informed to prevent this to use sense.
Doesn't, doesn't affect land values?
No.
It's just based on services?
Sales tax. So if anyone involved in the items, that's, if not, it's still going, because there are rules. So if anyone travels through the county, you pay the same tax. It's the same as when you go to her for county and buy something off of there. If they have the supplemental tax, you pay that supplemental tax.
So our citizens may have paid that supplemental tax somewhere else, and we're not aware of it.
It's just like sales tax, you're aware of it.
You pay it as part of the sales tax.
You know, the children you receive?
There, it is broken down in different ways. It's in all the states.
So if you went to... If you go to, um, Dixie, Idaho, if I saw. Put it on there. Okay, thank you for that connection, and certainly are, we will try to minimize or try to raise the revenue. So that's very important. Okay, um, it says, that's all the new businesses we have. Um, citizens comments? Nobody signed up, is there anyone who would like to list up, Parker?
Yes, I can get up here.
We have to recognize people from Ohio, from the hometown.
Can I go there?
Yes. I wanted to make sure we have a highlight file. If you would state your name and address.
My name is Sylvester Parker. One thirty-three Haltor Road, Mostland County. And, uh, in Ohio. I just wanted to remind you, or tell you about, um, the Gates County Medical Center. Back in, um, July, we made a board, a... Back in, um, July, I believe we were owed a vehicle. And it is a medical complete vehicle. And we want to show it off Friday at the, at the Gates County Medical Center here, so that you can see it and what it is. They gave us all the vehicle, everything, but not place to park, which is a problem. But fortunately, we do own the property there at Gates County Medical Center, so there's still not enough room to do it unless we find some cover to it. But at least we have a vehicle, it's probably going to be housed in the city of the units right now, but we are looking for it. But it is a complete medical center on wheels, pretty much. And so it can be used to, to the town if they have to, have a new vehicle, because it's a brand-new Mercedes, so.
So when they leave, then will it be available?
Friday.
Friday?
Well, we really, I'm going to the, uh, University City Parade, so that was the first time we're not in, but, but the city. But it will be officially done in Gates County, since this is our real home base, is Gates County. Uh, we're going to do it Friday at ten o'clock.
Was that through a brand?
Yes, through a brand, of course.
That looks far bigger, y'all.
Yes, it was, uh, it was quite a going for the CEO to write the brand and do it, okay, it went through and it's there. Somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Will that also be a guest and parade?
Oh, yes, yes, we, we, we got the application, so it should be there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's especially good to see you today.
Thank you, yes. Okay, anyone else?
Ma'am, oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for, I could have, I had pulled up. This was a citizen comment from Anthony Felton, he says, good morning, I'm sorry, I'm late, it's a ten. I have a question, the Civil War soldier statue that's watching over courthouse across the street, did he ever have a bayonet on the top of his rifle barrel? For some reason, I thought he did that one time, does anyone who's been here before, I was wondering, remember him, have you, thank you and have a good day, Anthony Felton, what is your opinion?
I have no idea, a bayonet, um, it is, the statue is very similar to statues across this country that for Union or Confederate soldiers, they just changed to have, will be. So I don't think it has a, I don't think it's ever had a bayonet, but I would swear I put it, but I don't think so. So, respond. Okay, you never know what kind is going to come up, I mean, okay, anything else? Okay, at this time, um, commissioners' comments, Mr. Jordan, do you have?
Uh, it's good to be here, still here, all right. And, uh, glad to see everyone out in the, in the lane, uh, properly. The citizens we meet, you know, the citizens that's going to be a blessing for the county. I do have one observation, concern that I would like for the board to be aware of, is that, I like the county manager. The old summer school, we sold that school to, uh, hatches. Under conditions that, uh, that they really, that schools, they really, it's wrong. They will reach the end, you drive, yeah. Who was that, contract, is it, sorry? Yes, we dropped that, they put that school, yeah, I think, yeah, I think we just contacted them. We get updates, and we got, uh, one of their players. Because by after, uh, when it comes to properties, uh, it's all the, you go back to the, we had a championship at that time.
No, sir, not, because it does not come back to us at the end of that ten years. County sold the property to North Carolina Preservation, and North Carolina Preservation sold the property to the hatches. So if at the ten, end of the ten years, the property is not back up to the standards, it does not come back to the county.
North Carolina Preservation?
North Carolina Preservation, they don't even acquire it, it just, they're the ones who sold it.
So it just-
So that's between them, that's not between the county and the hatch. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, but we do not, the county does not have any control over the property, we sold it to the preservation trust.
And it's my understanding that, um, if and when it refers back to Preservation of North Carolina, that if it's sold, the second time it's sold with similar or life requirements.
Correct.
Although if it, I don't know, be sure of the timeline, five years or it could be ten years, but it is in their control and their ownership.
Correct.
So basically, what you're saying is that, we are, we need to wait there?
Correct.
It always could, you need to get the contract, I, I just need to be, that's what you're saying.
The contract was between the hatches and the county for the tax issue, which was only five years. But it does not, there's nothing that says after ten years, if you don't do what you said you're going to do, the county gets the property back, no, sir.
And they're the intent that the full-
Correct, they have it, they have it now.
They got a tax free-
And when the base of, when the base of that, the building, they wanted me to do, to back it.
I'm sure that they are keeping a eye on the property.
They were, at one time.
Yes, that one, just that reason, well, that's, he wasn't strategic, that would be.
Well, they have closed the office in, Preservation had an office in, at Cotton Jean, Cottonville, even the party defending, she is retired, and they have closed that office, I believe. And they, I'm not sure where the regional office is, in the east side, or if it's all just with the state in Raleigh, so we can check with them and just-
Yes, I appreciate that, man. So here's the tradition.
That's right.
You're fully responsible.
Yes, some of us will still buy. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jordan, and we continue to, um, keep doing our awesome prayers. Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Thanks, citizens, for coming today, I thought it good seeing Mr. Jordan, which means that our better half is here. Thank you to Mr. Jones for taking over that role. The, the census is going to be very important next year, for monetary purposes, for Gates County, I'm saying. Hoping that everyone here will help get the word out, even though you're not a volunteer, it's important that every citizen in our county be counted, and just go take everybody's help to help get that word spread. It's exciting to note, some citizens have started talks about bringing Swamp Fest back to the county, looking forward to that, it'll be something good for the county. Looking forward to see how that goes over the next few months or so. Thank you all.
Commissioner Free?
Thank you, ma'am, Madam Chair. Certainly, I too appreciate everybody being here, and as I reiterate, the phone calls and the messages you send, and the messages you actually bring to my house. We listen to them, and we do, uh, in full gratefulness, not on our thoughts, but our feelings, and your wisdom for it, so thank you.
Commissioner Olin?
Mr. Parker? It's always good to see you. Thank you for sharing with us about the, the new vehicle, we look forward to seeing it in our county parade. And whoever is responsible, you will send our gratitude and thanks, as well as, and we're extending it to you as well. Thank you very much, and, uh, and I personally am looking forward to seeing that, and kudos to that, that organization. It's good to be here, beautiful weather, and just want to reiterate what Commissioner Jones said about the census, the census is a positive thing. The more headcounts we get, the more dollars that come our way, the better category that it puts us in. So I want to encourage everybody, you see that vehicle in front of your residence with the decal on the sign, don't think it's the IRS, bring it on in here with a piece of pie, and answer all the questions.
But you want to get a postcard first, or?
Postcard, yeah.
And if you don't like postcards, then you get the visitor.
Alright, very good.
So make sure you don't throw away the postcard.
Absolutely, thank you.
And, um, thank you all for coming, Mr. Parker, thank you, if you have any little gifts, we would gladly accept them. But that, um, next Monday, it's November eleventh, that is the first day. This year, we have a, as we do every year, a veterans' aid program at Court House, um, at eleven a.m., who has access to an arm assist with sun. This year, they are recognizing or honoring, uh, the Vietnam vets who from our county who gave all, made the supreme sacrifice. So we've invited their families to come, uh, to participate in that, and it's a very nice, uh, it's a nice day to honor and remember people who've made the extreme sacrifices and honor those that are still with us. So you can put it on your calendar, eleven o'clock on Monday at Court House. Okay, at this time, we will have a motion go into closed session to the North Carolina Journal Stat, one four three dash three eighteen eleven, legal, economic development, real estate, and personnel. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion to the main apartment, second, in discussion, here or none, all voters, they say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Okay, we'll take five minutes, recess, um, thank you once again for coming, and let us have a great Christmas today. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to come out for the session.
So move it, second.
Motion to the main apartment, second, all voters, they will say aye.
Aye.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move it, second.
Motion to the main apartment, second, all voters, they will say aye.